Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started for the December 13th meeting of the New London Planning Board. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Just a quick disclosure, we are recording tonight, just so everybody's aware. Let's see, we don't have minutes this week, so we will move on. The first thing we would do, then, is ask if there's comment from someone from the public for something that's not on our agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll jump right in, which is Matt Conway.
Wow, this is cool. You get the documents? Nice, thank you. So I'm here with Teddy from Grounds, and I own the building, Teddy owns the business. And basically, we had come in front of the board a few months ago and said that we were moving -- Dead River Oil Company has left our building, which I think you guys probably know by now for sure. And Case Candy, which was located in the ground floor level, the parking lot level in the back, moved upstairs to what was the office of Dead River on Level 1. We had planned, when we came to the board that time, and, you know, you approved for us to do so, that we would be occupying -- there's a front room there and a back room there, and they're just joined by an archway. So we had thought we were going to occupy both rooms for Case Candy, but when we made the actual physical move, my wife Karen, who runs and owns Case Candy, realized that the front room was more than enough space. So that left the back room empty. So our plan had been that Grounds was going to locate their bakery into the basement or lower-level parking level section, which you had approved, but it would be much more convenient for Grounds to have their back-room bakery on the same level that they have their coffee shop. So the change, as we can see up here highlighted in yellow, is that instead of that being part of a retail space for Case Candy, that we want that to become the bakery area, the ovens and work tables and all that for Grounds. And you can see in the bottom of there, hand-drawn in, not very professional, I apologize, the word "door." So there, if you all have been at Grounds, whatever, there's a -- in the café, there's a bathroom in the back, which you can see in that bottom right corner is the bathroom. Well, in that area, we have a door now that joins the front of Grounds' retail space or café space for the public. There's now a locked door in between there and the back. There's also a door that goes -- where it says "back door" on the right, a little further up from -- or next to the bathroom. And then we have the archway still in between what is Case Candy and the front of Case Candy. So there's actually three egresses now for both businesses as a result. So I called Mike Mathie last week, or the week before, whatever. So Mike came from the New London Fire Department, reviewed the space, said egress is great, no issue at all, that, like I said, it actually has three now instead of two. And we -- the only contention or thing for fire safety other than egress was the oven. We don't have an open flame cooktop in this location. It's not cooking, it's baking. And so Teddy has -- had delivered a large commercial oven, which he would like to have installed. So Mike called the manufacturer, and the manufacturer confirmed that that particular oven is vapor-free and does not require any kind of external ventilation or hood mechanism as a result. So -- and I don't know, Adam, if you got the email today, I sent you an attachment from Mike, which states that. So this is the oven company, Blodgett's, and they are saying in here that this is a vapor-free product, and that's it. So we would like to move -- so rather than -- now, the lowest level, which was Case Candy, for about a year and a half, is vacant. I frankly don't know what we're planning to do. I'm probably going to rent it out. I'm guessing commercial. We thought of maybe changing it and making it a small apartment, but I don't know yet. I'm not here to talk about that level. That level is vacant. And that's my story.
So I discussed the project with the fire chief this morning, as we do before all site plan applications. He basically said what Matt has said, where, you know, that Matt has been working with Mike Mathie, and that they are satisfied with the plans as of now, so there's no concerns from the fire department. Any work has Matt has been working with them in other projects will go through permitting at the State Fire Marshal's Office for their building permit, so there'll be additional
Are there any comments or questions from the board about this? And anyone from the public? Questions, comments?
So the finding of facts, and Matt, I don't know if you have been here since the law changed in August, so this may be new for site plan, but...
I don't think since August. I think we came in, like, May, June.
So now we just have to state facts that allow the planning board to approve the application.
Okay.
And so I've just sort of prepared two basic facts. It's a pretty basic application. The application complies with site plan regulations as written, and that no additional parking is required. So if there's anybody on the board who agrees with those facts and is inclined to make a motion?
I move.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Teddy.
Have a good night. Thank you.
I just get to make more muffins all the time now.
Okay, great. Next up is a public hearing on the annexation at Hunter's Hill Trust, and Albert Whitmer. Who would like to talk about that? Thanks.
Hi, I'm George Whitmer, representing my father, Albert, so came out to visit. We were looking for some walking-around land, basically. We really love it up here, the nature and then the land, and we were able to work a deal with Hunter's Hill to purchase some land, and we were looking to get enough to keep it in current use, so this should be the minimum that we need to keep it in current use, and just -- it's going to continue to be forest management. We're going to do joint work with them because they have a tree farm, and so we'll do the same kind of thing, manage the trees like they do, and just enjoy nature, so.
I can walk folks through the sort of technical aspects of the application.
Oh, sure.
So the size of the land, so it's 11.2 acres that they'd be looking to annex from Hunter Hills to the Whitmers. The Whitmers' property currently straddles Lake Shore Drive with the cottage on the smaller portion of land on the lakeside, and then additional land on the sort of the uphill side across the street. And so the annexation would be appended to the rear of that property and would wrap sort of behind many of the properties on Lake Shore to sort of create a hammerhead, more or less, up behind those properties. It does not increase the road frontage that the property has, which presumably, as it's laid out, would render it unsubdividable at this point without the installation of a whole new road built to town standard, because though there is enough road frontage, because you get both sides of the street, the side of this -- the land on the side of the street with the lake is not large enough to be an independent lot, and so the land that's contiguous to that, to get it to 2 acres, would have to consume all of the road frontage by straddling the street. So presumably, there's not additional ability to subdivide without putting in a private road or without the ordinance changing. That's not to say it could never happen, that's just a snapshot in today's regulation.
We received a letter from -- thank you. Are you going to read it? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so we received a letter from Judith Oats. Just, she couldn't attend the meeting, but I just wanted to read -- it's a short letter, so I'll just read it quickly. "I'm sorry that I won't be able to attend tomorrow night's meeting. We're hoping that the following comments might be made known to the planning board. Our family owns property at 534 Lake Shore Drive, map 50, Lot 12," which Adam is showing now, "adjacent to the annexation in question. We understand that the Whitmer family would like to acquire the land from the Hunter Hill Trust in order to help protect the watershed around the spring house, not shown, but located near the intersection of map 51, Lot 14, Hunter Hill Trust, and map 37, Lot 11, Heald, and map 37, Lot 10, Whitmer." That's the lot. "The spring house is used by the Whitmer family as a water supply for their residence at 482 Lake Shore. Our question is, why does the Whitmers' proposed annexation include a strip of what looks like a possible access route to Old Camp Tabor Road, map 25, Lot 1? Including that strip in the transaction doesn't look so much like a watershed protection as it gives the 10-acre parcel the look of a plausible, possible future subdivision. Thank you for your attention."
Should I respond? Can I respond to that?
Please, yep.
Well, my comment was, we were looking, you know, first that middle section there that goes back to the logging road. That road in the back is an unimproved sort of logging road, basically. There was only seven acres there, and if we wanted to try to get to current use, we kind of had to go left and right. And that open field to the left, behind the left side, that's where the logging gets staged, and the trucks, and whenever they do logging, which isn't very often, but -- so they didn't want to sell any of that, and they didn't want to go beyond the logging road, and so we were kind of left with going left and right. And then they didn't want to sell any close to their house, because their house to the right is not that far, so we didn't go that way. So we ended up with this shape, which looks a little odd, but in order to get the 12 acres, because my understanding of how the current use things work is, we need to have 2 acres for the existing property, which is only 1 acre, so we needed 1 more acre, that's the 11. And there's some, you know, the tax card calls out .81 acres, and, you know, how we exactly calculate it. So anyway, we needed that for the minimum to get 10 acres, so -- and then we sort of made the shape based on trying to get 10 acres. But -- and then the other thing is that from the logging road to the right, that's a big steep hill there, anyway, so, you know, well, anyway.
And just to be clear, you don't -- neither Hunter Hill or your -- I shouldn't say Hunter Hill may have rights to it, but this annexation land would not have rights to this access road either direct or...
Well, the land underlying has rights to Tabor, like Hunter's Hill has rights to access. And my understanding is that those rights travel with the land. But again, this is an annexation, so there's nothing we can do with that, not that we're planning on it. We purposely chose to do an annexation because we're only intending to have current use, and we don't need to subdivide it. But obviously, if sometime in the future somebody wanted to subdivide, that's a whole another process, you know? But right now, it's just going to be an annexation, so.
So it's not your intention to subdivide it at this time?
No, I mean, certainly not in the near future. I mean, I, you know, I can't predict what's going to happen 50 years from now, but...
I'm not sure we're going to care.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, my generation, we -- part of it is, we didn't want to see any houses back there, because there is a new house going there on the existing, you know, the Lake Shore lot there, which is fine, but, you know, we didn't want -- and then plus our spring, that was the initial center section, was to protect the spring, the drainage from the hill, you know, if we have that hill, any septic system, and then it's forest conservation behind, so unlikely any septic system would interfere with the spring, so that's that centerpiece, but then to get the current use status, we needed to get to 10 acres. But, so, we're not interested in doing anything there.
Are there other questions? Joe?
Yeah, I have a question for Adam. Adam, I'm a little confused about why they have to have 10 acres for continued use.
That's state law, Joe.
Is it? That's the minimum?
Minimum of 10 acres. And so if you have an undeveloped property, you can have just 10 acres, but if you have a developed property, your house and any cartilage, any area that you actively use, whether that's, you know, lawn that you're just using for, you know, your enjoyment, that is sort of taken out with the house. And so it's typically 2 acres that they say is sort of the house and cartilage. Sometimes it's more than that, depending on the layout of your property. So in this scenario, in order for them to have 10 undisturbed acres that qualifies for current use, they have to get to 12.2 acres, I think it is, in the end. But that's not something we have any jurisdiction...
What is the current use of status of the property right now?
I believe it's in current use.
It's currently in current use.
What?
And it's also a tree farm, so they have a little lower than current use, because it's a tree farm.
But that's not something that we have any jurisdiction over, or any ability to really take into account.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there other questions from the board? And what about the public? Questions, comments? Do you want to come up? Can you just state your name? Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Jason Reimers. I'm with -- I'm a lawyer with BCM Environmental and Land Law. I represent the abutter, the Domum Calo Trust, which has -- is Lot -- map 25, Lot 1, which there's that 200 feet of frontage that the woman in the letter asked about. And I just wanted to clarify that we are not opposed to this annexation, but my client does want to make clear for the record that the easement rights that the Hunter's Hill Trust has over the Domum Calo lot are for the Hunter's Hill property and do not transfer to the newly enlarged Whitmer property. I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Did you say that one was...
Sure. There is -- there is an easement deed. I don't have copies, but I don't... Correct. That -- do you know which property I'm speaking about, the Domum Calo lot? It's 25 -- map 25, Lot 1. And that's, I think Adam was just -- yeah, their dry -- our driveway goes right up there, and there's 200 feet of frontage on the new -- the proposed annexation lot on my client's property. Now, the Hunter's Hill Trust has a deeded easement, an access and utility easement over my client's property. And that -- and the Hunter's Hill Trust has the benefit in this easement deed of if they subdivide the Hunter's Hill Trust, it has access rights. However, I just wanted to clarify that this is an annexation, not a subdivision, and none of those rights of access or utilities, they stay with the Hunter's Hill Trust, they do -- none of them transfer over and apply to this newly enlarged lot. Is that clear?
I think what you're saying is, because it's an annexation, not a subdivision, any of the access rights, excuse me, or an easement that Hunter's Hill had with your client's property are not affected, and therefore don't convey -- there's nothing changed as a result of the conveyance from Hunter's Hill property to the property under discussion.
Exactly.
Well, yeah, a question for you. So what would that mean in the future if they decided to develop the property? Would they be able to bring utilities into their property now?
Into this newly...
Yes.
No.
Nothing at all?
Not over my client's property. There's no easement right for that. Thank you.
Are there other questions from the board? Yeah. Anyone from the public?
So the -- as far as the finding of facts, the two properties impacted by this, the Whitmer and the Hunter Hill, both will maintain -- the Whitmer will now be a complying size for the zone with the equal road frontage to what it has today, and the Hunter Hill will persist in being a complying size and road frontage.
So is there a motion from the board on how you'd like to proceed?
I move that the request to annex the Hunter's Hill Trust property to the Albert X. Whitmer property be approved as requested.
Second.
Great, second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you.
So George, as far as next step goes, when you have the Mylar prepared and ready for the board to sign, you can have your surveyor either mail it to the office or drop it off at the office. This board will not meet again until January 10th. If we have it by then, they can sign it at the meeting, and then just the two checks for the registry, one for $25 and one for $26, both made out to the Merriman County Registry of Deeds. Sorry, can you -- I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. The surveyors did prepare the Mylars, so I have them in the car, so...
Okay, if you want to...
I was hoping I can go get them.
Sure, if you want to bring them in, I don't have a -- I didn't bring a Sharpie with me, so -- but we can have the folks stop by the office and sign it.
Okay, great.
Great, thanks.
I'll go. Thank you, very much.
Thank you. And when you come back in, George, if we've moved on, you can just set them over here on the stage, and I'll get them at the end. Thank you. A fine point? Are you okay leaving it? Okay. Because we'll sign it at the end, but we're going to move on in the meantime. We have all the authorizations in the file from both the Hunter Hill and his father. Okay. So do you want me to just jump into...
Yeah, we're going to talk zoning now, so I think buckle up. Here we go.
Hopefully, it won't be too painful. So I think what Tim and I talked about doing, and does everyone -- I know most of the housing committee, you're here for your one section. If you want to follow along the rest of the ones we talked about, there's some copies on the stage you can grab, or Audrey or John, I think we have a couple of extra copies, too. Mary Ann, could you just point them to where it's the middle copy? Nope, 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 nope.
What do you want me to do?
Yep. All right. So I think what's going to work best is if...
There we am.
If we go through them all, and I just give an explanation as far as what each one is, so that when we're deciding on... That's fine. So that you'll have an explanation of everything, so that as we go through and assess whether -- first whether or not to move forward on this amendment, and then if there's any changes you'd like to make before we propose it, you'll have sort of a whole context. So in this sort of initial couple of minutes, we'll try not to sort of get bogged down on too many questions, but just to sort of run through and get an overview. Does that sound good? Okay. So the first amendment here on the first page, Article 2, General Provisions, this is the sign ordinance, and you'll remember that we've talked about this in the context of the New London Bar &amp; Playhouse. When the theater district was added four or five years ago, this section of the sign ordinance that is specific to the institutional districts was not updated to reflect the additional theater district, and so though it says institutional districts, plural, it then specifies which one of the districts, and it does not include the theater district. And so the Bar &amp; Playhouse has some new signage that they would like, that would not comply with the regular sign ordinance, and that's why we have this special section for the institutions. And so what we have proposed is to eliminate the specific district listings and just leave it at institutional districts, so that going forward, if we were to add other institutional districts or change names of the institutional districts, this would not continually be a problem to update. So that's the first one. Yep, sure. Can you just use your microphone, so I can? Thanks.
Is this where we need to talk about lighting for signage as well? Is that something that has to be included? Just have signs?
So that's a separate spot in the sign ordinance...
Okay.
...that allows for the downcast lighting.
All right, that's all I need to...
Yep.
Thank you.
So Articles 2 -- or Amendments 2 and 3 that impact the Article, what is that, 18, the cluster development, and then I think it's Article 19, that's the planned unit These two amendments were the ones that we've discussed about eliminating the 5-acre requirement for a contiguous tract of land. As you're aware, we have a bit of a list of amendments here. These are the two amendments that I think we should consider not moving forward with for this year, if we're looking to whittle down the list a little bit. Many of these amendments that we have proposed have people or projects that are waiting for these changes to be passed in order to move forward with something. These two do not. We don't have a developer that is, you know, ready and waiting for this to change. And after the housing regulation, these are the other two higher complexity issues, and I think that if we are trying to present this in a palatable manner, these are the two that maybe we should put off to next year. So we can get into more details when we loop back around if people want to, but that's just sort of the overview on those two. The fourth item up for potential amendment is, in the commercial zone, adding electric vehicle charging station facilities under uses permitted that would require a special exception.
Excuse me, what citation? What paragraph? Okay, just in the commercial district?
Nope, so if you turn to -- I'm sorry, the pages aren't numbered, but if you go to the one amended, number four, it's Article 7A7 and Article 11G4C.
Okay.
Yep. And so as I shared with you, we've had a couple of inquiries about charging stations at commercial properties in town, and I'm not necessarily meaning individual charging stations that maybe an individual at an office building is using, or at someone's home, but a commercially available charging station, like, for example, like the Tesla ones, or there's many other companies, but that look like gas pumps, and, you know, there's five or six of them, and cars can pull up and charge. So typically, they're Level 2 chargers or DC fast chargers. But right now, our zoning ordinance is silent to them, and with a permissive zoning ordinance, that means that they're simply not allowed without a variance. So how our ordinance deals with filling stations is that they're allowed by special exception. So it seems natural that electric vehicle charging stations would be treated similarly there, and so that it would be important to add it into uses permitted by special exception. So that has to happen in two places. It happens under the commercial article, and then there's a separate article near the end of the ordinance that sort of wraps up all of the uses that are allowed by special exception, so it would go in there. And then we would also add a definition for an electric vehicle charging station facility, which the sort of working draft of that is charging centers of three or more charging stations for the use of the general public. So we can get into a discussion with that in just a minute. And then the fifth amendment that's proposed is the -- this is the area where our R2 and our R1 district properties that do not have water and sewer hookup have this funky setback where it's a minimum of 20 on one side if the two sides have an aggregate of 50. So if you have 20 on one side, you've got to have 30 on the other. And this is a unique way of measuring setbacks that, I'll be honest, I've never seen in a zoning ordinance before, and it's been in ours for decades at this point, and no one can really pinpoint why it was written that way, and what benefit it really provides. If you happen to be the abutter that gets 30 feet, you know, it's good for you, and the person on the other side only gets 20, but there really seems to be no rhyme or reason or explanation for that. And so what we are considering to propose is to just leave it at a flat 20 feet, and that's what -- what you're already allowed on one side. It would more or less allow you to have flexibility of 20 feet on either side. And so that would be in R2, and then in the R1 properties that do not have water and sewer, they're treated the same as an R2 property. sewer, they're treated the same as an R2 property. And then the sixth amendment that's proposed, and we have friends from the Mesmer Pond Protective Association here that may jump in with clarification on this, but they helped with drafting the language. But the intent here is that as it currently exists in our wetlands conservation overlay and in our shoreline overlay district in the waterfront buffer, there's no allowance for removing the root system of invasive and aquatic species. And so you're familiar with when we cut, when we approve cutting in either of those buffers, that the trees that are cut have to leave the root system, or the bushes that are cut have to leave the root system. And for native species, that's a good thing because it holds the banks and it provides, you know, stability and erosion control, among some other benefits. But when it comes to invasive and exotic species, it's not a good thing because it means they're going to come back. And so you've lost any benefit of their removal except for in some particular species where leaving them and doing some other things like knotweed are important. But, so what this proposes is to allow for the area to actually be excavated to remove the actual root system and for the use of some herbicides as allowed by RSA 51A. John or Audrey, do you, either of you have anything you want to, we'll get into more discussion on it in a minute, but as far as overview goes, is that sort of-
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll get back to discuss it more in a minute. And then the last amendment that the board is presented with, considering is the one you're all most familiar with from our Thursday morning sessions, is the workforce housing overlay rewrite. And so I don't think we need to provide a lot of details on that, since I think you all are very familiar with them. But it's also worth mentioning that we received a petitioned zoning amendment last week. And so for the petitioned zoning amendment, it's a fairly simple, and we don't really have any say over this, so I'm not sharing this with you, looking for your input, I'm just sharing it with you so that you are aware of it. And then come the public hearing, you do have to take a vote on whether or not you support it, and that goes on the ballot, but you don't have the ability to change it in any way. And so this petitioned amendment is to add these uses to Article 5 in the residential district, Section A, uses permitted to allow conservation areas and nature and hiking trails. And the synopsis they gave with it is that this proposed amendment seeks to legalize the many trails and conservation areas that have existed in part or in whole on privately-owned residential properties for many years. Many of these properties are undeveloped tracts of forest and fields. Because the New London zoning ordinance is constructed in a permissive zoning ordinance, if a use is not specifically identified as a permitted use or used permitted by special exception in a zone district, then the use is not permitted in that zone district. That is the petitioned zoning amendment. So do you want me to just start with number one, see if, okay, all right. So that's sort of the overview, so that you guys have a broad understanding as we're walking through these and deciding whether or not to move forward. So amendment number one, this is the sign to the Barn Playhouse. Does, first of all, are people, are folks supportive of moving forward with it?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any changes to what is presented that you would like to make?
No.
At the public hearing, you have the ability to make changes that night. If a substantive change is made to any of these, then we schedule a second public hearing for later in January. But as of right now, this is what would be proposed and advertised as the zoning amendment. So-
Adam, one question. When would this meeting be, in December?
Nope, so this would be, January 10th would be the first public hearing, and then if we needed to have a second public hearing, that would be on January 24th, I believe it is. So if there's no changes that somebody wishes to make, then it would just be a motion to move this amendment forward to the public hearing on January 10th.
Are there, well, are there any other comment, are there any comments on this?
And we should, how many? So you can appoint, we should just for the record, appoint both David and Emily for Jeremy and Paul Vance.
Yeah, so David and Emily, can you sit in for Jeremy and Paul? Thank you. So is there-
Yep.
So is there a motion to move this to public hearing?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
So amendment proposals number two and three, the cluster and the planned unit development. And it's important that I think we talk about these together, even though they are independent amendments, because I think it's important that these two sections of the ordinance mirror each other. So I just want to be clear, if we choose not to move forward, I don't think we should move forward with either one. If we choose to move forward, I think they should both be moved forward. So I guess I'm looking for some insight from you folks as to whether or not you think this is worth keeping in the mix for this year and discussing. We still have some particulars that would have to be ironed out, you see some stuff in yellow. Or if we say, you know, that we need to keep this on our list and that this is maybe something that could be next year, and perhaps something that if workforce housing goes through this year, we could look with the Housing Commission to maybe dive in a little bit deeper on this. I think that these are two housing styles that could provide some broader diversity in town, that maybe we have, by waiting a little bit longer, we would have more time to maybe make additional adjustments that may actually pan out to a greater benefit in the end.
I have a question.
No, we're looking for questions. So you had a question?
Okay, so it looks like you're going from the first paragraph that was there before, about minimum five acres, down to a 30,000 square foot unit. So on a 30,000 square foot, how many housing units would be allowed to be built on that?
So the density, and so this is the funny part, whereas if, if a development, if a planned unit development or a cluster development were built in the commercial as a rental, they can exist with only 5,000 square feet of land per unit. But in these scenarios where they would be owned independently, you have to have a minimum of five acres to get in the door, but then the density would apply that exists in your underlying zone. So depending on the zone, Joe, it would change to whatever the underlying density is, but you couldn't do one of these developments unless you had five acres, unless you got one approved as a rental, and then state law says we have to allow the subdivision of a rental into a condominium if nothing changes other than the ownership structure. So there's a sort of backdoor way of getting there anyways, which is the impetus that I think we should address the change at some point, because we shouldn't have an ordinance on the books that just requires somebody to go through this convoluted path. And I do think that it's an important thing for us to keep on our radar, I just am not sure that with all that we have before us this year, that it's something that's needing to. It's also complex, we're going to have to go through this explanation a lot, and I think we're going to have to do a lot of explaining on the Housing Commission or the workforce housing overlay. So I think that we need to sort of balance what we have as far as board resources and where we want to dedicate our energy to.
I agree. I think that, you know, it feels like it's watch the pea under the shell, and I want to make certain that I follow where the pea goes, so not to cast dispersions on the intention, it's just that I'd like to understand it a little bit more. And right now, I don't think I could. You know, I don't think it could be compressed into my brain that quickly.
So any other comments from the board in terms of putting two and three on hold for this year?
Go ahead, Paul. I agree with Mary Ann.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do, too, Tim. I think it's too dense for us to try to explain to other people.
With all the other stuff we have on our plate, I agree.
Okay. Nope. We just choose not to move forward. And so it's a couple pages that you'll have to turn, because that one's long. I gave you all the context of the ordinance in case we wanted to get into a deeper discussion. So then the amendment number four, this is the EV charging station. Are there thoughts from committee members on how it's in here as far as getting it in the ordinance? And then the definition? Just to give you some context of where Tim and I are coming from with suggesting that the definition be charging centers of three or more charging stations, we were trying to figure out a way that we could make it clear that this is intended for commercial charging stations, and we started by being specific in the level of charging stations, so Level 2 and DC fast chargers. But whenever we tie something to the current technology, we get in this pickle down the road where the technology is not the same, and we can't adapt fast enough because we're stuck on this annual zoning amendment, and like this year, sometimes we have a whole bunch, and we have to pick and choose what we can tackle. And so we didn't want to tie it to a technology. But we also didn't want to tie the hands of folks who have a electric vehicle charging station as an accessory use at their residential property or at their office building. You know, Frank Anzalone's office is a really good example, they have a charger in the parking lot, the two of their employees have electric cars, and that's just a Level 1 charger. That's a, you know, you plug in for a long duration, it's not a fast charger where you're plugging in for 45 minutes and getting a couple hundred miles out of it. And so we wanted to make sure that this was clear, that this was meant for a facility that's a charging station, not just a single Colby Sawyer plunking a electric vehicle charging station in K Lot, that this is a charging station that is for the general public, that it's not, you know, intended for the private use of an employer or their employees.
May I ask? So I, before we continue, so essentially what you're saying is Frank Anzalone's charging station is fine. It's for his personal and employees' use.
Correct.
And it is not presenting itself as a charge, commercial charging station. And going forward, any electric vehicle charging station would need a special exception by the Board of Adjustment.
Correct.
And forgive my ignorance here, what would constitute a special exception?
So a special exception, a special exception is a lesser threshold than a variance, and so there's specific criteria for the Board of Adjustment to go through. But notably, what it does not include is having to prove a hardship-
Okay.
... which is the most difficult part of a variance.
Right.
And so this is saying that, you know, if there's not any adverse impacts to the neighborhood and the immediate area, and the zoning board determines that by going through some very specific criteria, that it's allowed. And so I'll be honest, that this is not going to be easy street for electric vehicle charging stations just by having this in here, and that's really just to do with the nature of how a charging station is designed. If you look at a Tesla station, for example, it has Tesla written on it in about four places. We don't allow four signs for an entire commercial business, let alone each charging station and a bankhead of them having four signs on it. And then each one of those signs is internally lit, which we don't allow, period. And so it's not, even if they want to come to New London and install a charging station, they're either, one, going to have to present a complying design, and, you know, they will quickly point to our gas pumps that have signage all over them, and those gas stations have been there for decades at this point, long before our sign ordinances exist. And so yes, they change out the actual physical pump, but the pump and the signage on them has been there, so it's a little bit different. Or they will have to go to the zoning board of adjustment and prove a hardship as to why their charging stations cannot be designed to accommodate our regulations.
Yeah, they can put a shroud over the thing.
Right. It's a, it's a little bit easier, and there may be aspects of it that are site plan compliance, that then you have the ability to waive, and obviously we know waivers don't have the same threshold as a variance. So there may be more work to do down the road on amending our site plan regulations-
Right.
... that we can do just through regular public hearing process, but this at least opens the door to allow it to be in the town.
I'm okay with it going forward.
Yep.
Yeah, Joe?
So if the owners of the Hannaford Shopping Center wanted to put in a charging station that would take maybe 10 or 12 cars at a time, that would fall under this, that would be considered electric charging thing?
Yeah.
How about if Twin Pines wanted to put in some stations, stations just for its residents only?
So those, for residents only, they would not be for the general public. And so that's, that's where this definition specifies for the use of the general public.
Okay.
Those, that would be an accessory use to the residential.
Well, what would happen if some of the residents invited their friends to come over here to fill up? If some resident invited their brother to come over with his car to charge up there, would that be considered general public usage if non-residents are charging there?
I think that would be a guest of a tenant, and so it's a little, it's a gray area, but it's not the same as the general public, that, you know, you just happen to drive a Tesla, you don't know anybody that lives there, and you just, you know, drive in and use their charger. You're being invited, maybe you're an overnight guest of a tenant and you drive an electric car. I think that's reasonable that your host, your friend, family member, whatever, can allow you to plug into their charging station, whether that's in their private, single-family home, or whether that's an amenity of their apartment complex.
Okay, would this ordinance cover any chargers that the state of New Hampshire wants to place in the town, for example?
So if, so if the, if the chargers were located on state-owned property and were through some state program, then they don't have to comply with any ordinance anyways because that's a governmental use. If the money is just funding or funneling through the state through the Volkswagen mitigation trust fund, but it's really going to a private entity, then it still has to go through whatever local review is there.
Thank you.
But if the town wanted to put a charging station at the town office or at the public parking lot by the library or any other public property-
The beaches.
Beaches, yep. Those can, that can happen no matter what, because municipal doesn't have to abide by our own regulations.
That's always a good point.
Yep.
Are there other comments from the board in terms of advancing this to public hearing?
I don't know if there's any, this is kind of news that the public made.
Yeah, that's true. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Okay. So what's your pleasure in terms of moving this to public?
Second.
Okay, great. All in favor of moving this to public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great, thank you.
Okay. So number five, this is the wonky side yard setback. So though I would really like to get this taken care of this year, if people are comfortable with it, I will say if people are teetering on the edge of discomfort with the number, I think this is the one that, we've lived with it for 50 years, if we have to live with it for another year, we can do that. So I'll sort of leave that to you guys for your guidance as far as what you're comfortable with.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of keeping it because it's such a small edit, but I don't know what others think.
I, oh, sorry, I'm in the wrong, I thought we were in amendment six, never mind.
I don't remember, but it's, I remember that, never mind. Other thoughts from the board in terms of?
Tim, I've got one question on this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why did we pick a date of March 11th, 1969 to be a cutoff date for grandfathering, basically?
That was the day that New London adopted zoning, town meeting of 1960, what was it, '05 or '09?
So if you're going to change the zoning law, shouldn't everybody as of today be grandfathered in? Since you're talking about future, future issues? Is there anybody who'd be caught in the situation where they're not having compliance with their house was built after 1969?
No, so this, this provision here, Joe, is just saying that lots existed before that date when subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance were adopted, and that they are just legal lots at that point if they existed.
Okay.
So if they were created after that point, they would have required a variance.
Okay, how about somebody who has a lot now, that they want to subdivide, say in six months, and it's passed, they can go, they have to go by these rules then?
Correct.
Yeah.
What do others think in terms of what to do with this one?
I'm okay with it going- I'm okay with it going forward.
Anyone else want to say yea or nay?
How many are we up to now?
Twenty-five.
We're on five.
So, that will be.
But we've eliminated two.
Right. Right, so, plus the petition amendment, so we would be at five total, I think.
And, and that's all we're going to go for?
I think we're getting to the point where it may be overload for the voters. I don't think that even though we'll publicize this and we'll have meetings and we'll put it in municipal matters with explanations, I think that it may be a bit much for everybody to digest. And I, I think we run the risk of not having things pass if we put forth too, too much for March town meeting.
Would these amendments be listed as individual valid items or as a lump, as a package?
So, it can happen in two ways. They can happen individually even within a particular article or you can lump things together. How I would propose is that each one of these that we've discussed would be individual amendments, but then something like the workforce housing overlay, there's a whole bunch of amendments in there that would be as one chunk, one vote, that if one doesn't pass, they all don't pass. If one passes, it all passes. Versus each one of these, Joe, where it's numbered in here, amendment five, those would be voted on individually.
Okay. Janet, what do you think is the chance it would pass for separately or to get lumped together?
No, so this would be, this would be independent of the others. I'm just saying that all of the changes within the workforce housing overlay would be one.
We can't lump this with like the electric vehicle.
Right.
As an example, we have to keep those separate.
I guess from, from a political aspect, what's the maximum amount of changes an electorate will tolerate?
You know, it depends, but if, if people think we're increasing density a great deal, then it won't pass. People don't want to see change that quickly. I guess that's the best way.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could argue this one frees people up to have a little bit. We've run into this example before, right Adam, of people adding like an addition or something to their house and suddenly they can't because they do not, they've got enough buffer, they've got the 20 feet, but they don't have the 30 feet on the one side or something like that, so.
I mean, it makes sense.
Right. Yeah, but I hear your concern though Janet, too. What do others think? So, do we want to come back to this one and then if, sort of keep it as our, as one that we decide to not advance? We can, if we want to advance it, we can come back to it, I guess, let's put it that way?
Yep. Okay. And so, in the sixth, John or Audrey, I think I'll invite you guys up to sort of, you know, give us a little synopsis on this from where you came from. I think that makes sense. This is the exotic and invasive species.
Sure. Hi, my name is John Doyle. I'm a member of the Mezzipon Protective Association. I'm here with Audrey Chisner, she's the president of the association. The, as, I don't know, you must, you have the description of the, okay. As, it says in the description, the purpose of the amendment is to include language in the, that allows for the removal of invasives from both the shoreline and the wetland zoning buffers. And the reason for this, and the reason that I first approached Adam with this, is that if, if the overall goal, one of the overall goals of these ordinances is to protect the native vegetation and ground cover in these, in these sensitive areas, then one way of, one way of addressing that would be to remove invasives that have the potential of dominating and impacting the growth of these native plants. When I first talked to Adam about, about this, the thought was that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, that, that we wanted to include, not necessarily, we wanted to include specific language because of the, the way that the ordinances are interpreted, that we wanted to be very specific that we can take exotics and invasives out. Is that right? Was that your, that was the reason we started this, right?
Correct.
Okay. And we, the amendments are set up such that they rely on the state definitions for invasives and exotics. And they also go by, abide by the state regulations in terms of the use of herbicides, if that's the chosen method of removal. We've met, we've had conversations with and brought a representative from the Department of Agriculture out on site. He's, he's actually seen this, this wording, he's, he's okay with this. Plus, he's reviewed our sites, he's given us some recommendations on, or he showed us where we can get information on how to identify invasives. He's given us a couple of references to apps that we can carry on our phone if we want to identify them that way. The, the other piece of the amendment, as I think Adam sort of overviewed, was we wanted to balance the, the requirement or the benefit of pulling out invasives with the fact that you could cause erosion and with the removal of or distributing of the root systems and so that we wanted to include some, some review by the planning board with that activity. I talked to Adam after he sent out this draft and I, I wanted to, and it was around the idea of, of did the planning board need to review every removal? And he thought that would be a reasonable discussion for tonight, Adam?
Yeah, and, and I did give it a little bit more thought this afternoon too, John. And I think in trying to keep consistent with the other portions of the, the ordinance, whenever replanting is required for tree cutting, that's when it triggers a coming to the planning board versus an administrative review for the planning board to actually look at the replanting plan and approve it. So, I think as far as consistency goes, it probably does make sense for it to come here that anytime there's replanting in the waterfront buffer, to make sure that it is on the native species and all of that, that whether it's a tree that came down and you have to go, it's the same level of, of overview. You know, there, and we don't, there's no fee involved in coming to the planning board for replanting and there's no public hearing notices. So, it's a relatively low threshold, you know, we meet twice a month so it can happen fairly reasonably fast, too. So, I don't know what your thoughts on that are.
The, so the example I gave, well, when we brought the representative out from the Department of Agriculture, he, we had him, we had done, pardon me, let me stop for, we had done a survey of the ashore land, ashoreline and some of the stream crossings. And I shared that survey with, with Adam. And the, what they found was the, generally, the, there is a very dense native population around the, of vegetation around the shore. But it's also got a scatter, the invasive buckthorn is scattered across around the perimeter of the plant. And these, these buckthorns are fairly large, they're maybe one or two inches in diameter of the stems. And when we brought the gentleman out from the Department of Agriculture, he looked at these and his recommendation was that you would smother them. And that is cutting them off at about six to eight inches, putting a bag over them. And he referenced me to the site called Buckthorn Baggies, that you put it on, you seal it, let it cook for one or two years, and after, it typically dies and then you would cut it off at the ground level and you're, you're done. There are several in the sites that we did walk around, some fairly small saplings. And that was the concern I raised to Adam, is that these are less than a point in terms of size and what would be, what, if, if all you were going to do was just pull one or two of these, would that be, why would that necessarily have to trigger a, a review from the planning board as opposed to just pulling them out? That was, that was the example I gave, Adam.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm sort of doing a quick scan of the ordinance on the whole for any time, any tree or plant is being removed. And then, it doesn't necessarily specify any difference in type of plant, what it is that's being removed.
And again, I was just getting, I was somewhat being realistic, given that, you know, people are going out there, they're going to do the, probably the cutting off of the larger ones because they are going to be tough to pull out. But if there are small saplings, they're going to pull them. I mean, I just, that was just the rationale to say that that's probably going to happen and would that be just?
Right. And I mean, I don't envision this changing. So, as, as it currently stands in a 25 by 50 foot cell, you have to have 25 points of vegetation. So, if, if there's an invasive species that currently is contributing to that 25 points, you know, if there's a sapling that, that is contributing to that, and by cutting that, you would go below that 25 points, you would have to replant just the same as if it were a native that you need to cut for some reason that's taking you below that threshold. And so, in that scenario, no matter what, how the ordinance stands and has stood for many years, that would require the planning board to, to review. And so, I think it's important to keep it consistent. I do think that I maybe messed up on the, the lettering of the sections here. And John, I think it's the question you asked me about where it was going to fit in. I think I was meaning it for it to be added to B and not to be C, because C gets into a whole separate part of how we score the, the vegetation.
Sure.
Whereas B, it's, I think the language you proposed to add is pertinent to go into that section B, just as a continuation of that subset of the article.
Sure.
And so, therefore?
So, there would be no C there, it would just be added to B.
And there's a reference to it. That's a different section. Okay. But it wasn't clear.
That's section C there is different. That's, is it section C in caps?
Right, that is section C, yeah. When you get into all of these subs, you get into big C, little c. Right, so that's in the big C permitted uses a couple pages before.
Right.
Which is certainly confusing. I don't know if we should, perhaps we should specify invasive aquatic species may be removed within the waterfront buffer and then use the same language that we use for the?
Using the previous.
Right, where is that? Where it says?
This is a search for a site, isn't it?
And so, maybe we don't need to add any, maybe we, do you think we should add in that line, invasive slash aquatic species and their root systems may be removed within the?
That was going to be my suggestion.
Okay. Are you guys comfortable with that?
Obviously, uh?
So, in this first line here where it says invasive slash aquatic species may be removed within the waterfront buffer, to add in invasive slash aquatic species and their root systems may be removed within the waterfront buffer, just to be really specific that that, that this is a scenario where that is allowed, whereas just above, we've said you have to leave the root system intact with the other vegetation. I just want to make sure it's clear. I mean, I think us sitting here, we all know that's the intention. The difference will be 10 years from now when it's different people at this table. We just want to make sure that's clear.
And you're going to change it in both spots, right?
Correct. Audrey, Joe?
And I think it should be in the woodland buffer as well, and their root system in the woodland.
Right.
Totally made.
Right.
I just wanted to clarify, like, the, this guy from the state that came down, this way he suggested it be done, and this is especially not to use herbicides, which is, we don't want to use unless we have to, but is, it's you cut it off, you don't take it out, you do not pull out the roots. You smother it, you put this thing, basically it's like a special baggie and you, you cut it to like yeh high and then you put this baggie on it and secure it and over two years, it smothers it. The plant, the roots shrivel up and the native plants surrounding it basically just take over.
So, we absolutely should not put the, you know, excluding the root system.
So, maybe we say, because there are some species where you remove, right? So, then should we say?
But and/or, you don't want to say.
Right, so should.
Only if you pull.
Right, so.
We want to have the option to do, this is like the most, the least invasive way to, to do it. And it just shrivels up and the other plants around it.
Right.
Take over the space.
Right, so I think, I think what we could say is invasive and exotic, exotic species may be cut or removed. So, I think the removed implies removing the plant, the cut implies cutting it at the ground.
Well, we don't actually want to cut it necessarily, I mean, the ones, it depends on.
His terminology was smothering.
Well, we need, but that's in one case, right? We, sometimes you were, you just gave the example, we're going to cut the top off and then smother the six inches coming out of the ground, so that's part of the cutting, right?
Right, okay.
And then, right?
And then, to me, removal would be actually removing the.
Right. And certain things, obviously like knotweed, you don't want to remove the roots.
There's another plan, I forget which one it is, but you basically, you just put this like plastic over it.
Knotweed.
Knotweed.
Oh, that was the knotweed.
Right. Because you don't want to try to remove the roots from that because then it goes all over.
You smother, again, you smother it, it's a different, you kind of put this big plastic thing on and you.
Yep.
It's, it's more difficult.
Do they?
It's a five-year process, but yes.
It's a five-year process. And then, you put mulch on it and just kind of hold everything down and then it will eventually smother.
Do they have a, like a comprehensive document that we could reference so that we could say, you know, invasive slash exotic species may be cut or removed within the waterfront buffer as right?
So, you just don't want to be so specific because every plant has its own.
Right, that's what we're trying to do by, we're trying to broaden it because we're trying to say may be cut or removed and then if we can cite New Hampshire DES or something like that.
But for the actual document.
I've got one, I've got one, John, I can do if you like yours.
No, I could, I, he was very free of them, he gave me quite a few.
But we just have to know what language we want to include tonight. Just to know if there was sort of like a best management practice document that we could reference so that no matter what species you're dealing with, this would cover it by saying this document will tell you how to do it.
Is this stuff on the DES? So, basically, if we said that.
Department of Agriculture, yeah.
Yeah, the Department of Agriculture recommendations, something like that. This guy was amazing, by the way. He just like walked down the road and said, that's just identified F. Amazing.
Is there a way, sort of Department of Agriculture guidance or best practices? We need a specific document?
Yeah. I mean, I think if we say maybe, so invasive aquatic species may be cut or moved within the waterfront buffer in compliance with NHDES standards.
DOA, I think it's DOA standards, but yeah.
DOA, sorry. What does that stand for, John?
Department of Agriculture.
Did you catch what I just?
Thanks.
In compliance with Department of Agriculture standards.
I think, yeah, I agree, Adam, that's consistent with the other parts of the regulation where we're basically saying this is how you identify them, this is how you would use herbicides if that was appropriate. And again, this would fall in that same category, you're just going to follow their, their guide, the guidance.
We want to make it pliable for the future as these things change and new species come up and new treatments come up and all that.
Adam?
Yeah.
Can we do something like certified professionals?
Well, we have.
Well, so that we don't have to keep going to state.
So, and we discussed that and I think that this, I, when I say we, I meant the three of us, so don't feel like you missed out on something. But I think there was concern over if there are readily accessible certified professionals that would be able to provide that certification, because I don't think there's necessarily, you know, like a certified arborist is, you know, certified in trees, but they're not necessarily certified in all the plants. And so, it got a little sticky, so I think we were trying to find a way around that.
Organic cultural.
Yep, I think it was. Change it to DES or something, but I think that.
Yep, and so, we can change that in, in both sections here. And so, Joe, this, this would be an example where two separate parts of the ordinance will be treated as one amendment because we wouldn't want this to pass in the wetland section and not in the waterfront or vice versa. So, to make sure that a standardized approach is taken, it would be two separate articles within the zoning ordinance, but one amendment that you're voting on.
Do we have any amendments or any issues with knotweed or something like that in, on land? Do we have any ordinances of talking about how that should be?
Do we have any ordinances talking about how that should be handled? Or is this solely restricted?
Outside of...
Yeah, outside of, like, Paul's backyard, for example.
Well, as long as there's no streams or wetlands in Paul's backyard.
Okay, so we don't have any governing rules for people who want to get rid of knotweed in their backyard?
No, no. So are folks comfortable with the, are you guys comfortable with adding those little pieces and folks here?
Yep.
Okay.
So is there, besides doing a site visit in Paul's backyard, is there a motion to move this to the public hearing?
So, second?
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
So that will be John and Audrey, January 10th, 6:30 here will be the public hearing for the zoning amendment. If there are not any substantive changes proposed that night, then that's, they'll take a vote to move it to the town warrant ballot at that point. If there's a substantive change that's proposed, we just have to hold a second public hearing at the end of January.
Okay, great, thanks very much. Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming.
And I feel bad that we've run some of the housing commission members out of the building, but I wanted to make sure we got through some of the other ones that...
Yep, thanks for sticking around.
So, if everyone has in front of them, this is the latest copy of the workforce housing overlay district amendments that Mark updated as recently as yesterday, so let me walk you briefly through the changes that look different than the version that you saw last Thursday. So on page 109, under the density increase, there is, we changed the 10 units of net tract area to per net tract area, and 16 units per net tract area. On page...
That was what we discussed last year.
That is what we discussed, yep. And then on page 114, this is the exact same table that had been proposed all along, but as this, it was just sort of on this last page that Mark had this table under, with the definitions, so he, he put it into the ordinance and the, the spot, it was referenced to go in this spot all along, it just wasn't actually living on this page yet, so that just includes it there. And then we made, if you flip to the last page, he and I discussed the, the issue I was having that I was not articulating well last Thursday of the net tract area, and so we made an adjustment to the definition, so that it's the gross area of a property equalling the minimum district lot area required, so that it's tying it to whatever that density is for that district. And so then by having that be the per in the density increase section, that's saying you can have six units per net tract area, and that net tract area is tied to whatever that minimum is for that particular zone, not just as any lot as a whole, no matter what size or what zone. So I think those are the three changes that look different from last Thursday. Let me just see, I don't, Paul Vance did, he's out of town, but he's been sort of communicating with me via email, and he raised the question that he's still, still not sure that the garden definition and that the townhome definition really are necessary to sort of divide them up, or in the way they are defined. He just asked me to, you know, I'm sure that you all remember him bringing that up at a meeting, so he just asked me to sort of make that comment, so.
Mary Ann, do you have a question?
Could we go over the net tract area again, because I'm not sure this definition is all that clear?
Sure.
It sounds, I mean, I think I got it from the last meeting. Essentially, the requirements and limitations apply to the lot that it would ordinarily be applied, even if we didn't subtract the wetlands. So essentially, the lot is characterized by its status prior to subtracting the wetlands, flood plains, and slope areas. Is that correct?
No, I think it's the opposite. So it's characterized after you've subtracted. So it's saying if you need two acres for the minimum for that zone, but a half an acre of what, of your two acres is wet, that half acre does not count towards the two acres you need, so that you would really need two and a half acres to account for the half acre of wetlands, or steep slopes, or whichever portion in here, but...
Okay, that's not clear to me. So for an R2, just, let's just make it up, for R2, if it were, if it had wetlands or flood plains or whatever in it, I would need net two acres.
Correct.
Okay, let me read this again.
And then it would be six or 10 units per that net.
Let me read it again.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think you're meaning lot area requirement, as opposed to R requirement?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Okay, that's what confused me, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, they were that easy, right?
I think this still needs work. It's not clear. And I'll take a crack at writing it, but it's not clear.
Can you be specific as to which part you're struggling with?
Is subtracting as an operative word a challenge? Do you want to switch that to like excluding, or minus, or, or...
Right. There has to be something like the net result of subtracting all these things must still equal the requirements for the area, something that's, you know, essentially, because I think gross area is confusing.
Adam, I have a suggestion. Can we just define in a separate line what the word net acreage means, and then just refer to that in subsequent listings? If you define what net acreage means, start with.
That's what, that's what this is trying to do, Joe.
So, I don't know, maybe it's too obvious, but I, I'm pretty easy to think that what net acreage actually means is the usable land that's available after you subtract all the nonusable pieces.
Adam? What about the remaining area of a property after wetlands, flood plains, and areas with slopes greater have been subtracted?
That's moving the needle very well, I think, I think also, it's, you know, you're saying...
What's left of it.
Yeah, you're saying the remaining area of a property...
After...
Essentially, after net of all the deductions...
Removing.
Has to meet the minimum, as opposed to equaling. We're saying the property is equaling, and I just, I'm sorry, but it just, it's confusing to me.
So change the gross to remaining?
Yep. Area of a property after subtracting all wetlands, flood plains, and areas with slopes greater than 25% within the steep slope overlay district. What's, what...
Meet, you know, it's sort of like meets the requirement, minimum district lot area requirement.
I'm just trying to define net tract area.
What's that?
So, and I think that that... I think we still want to make sure that we do tie in something about the minimum lot area, so that it's not just...
Yes.
The six units per whatever that net is.
Right, I totally...
So if we say, right, so if we say the remaining area of a property after subtracting all wetlands, flood plains, and areas with steep slopes greater than 25% within the steep slopes overlay district...
And then we need a transition.
Meets, meeting the minimum district lot area requirement. Provided it meets the minimum area lot requirement, minimum district lot area requirement. I think that's better.
Something like that. Okay, so what we have drafted is the minimum area of a property after subtracting all wetlands, flood plains, and areas with steep slopes greater than 25% within the steep slopes overlay district, that also meets the minimum district lot area requirement.
You said the minimum, as opposed to the remaining.
Remaining. Sorry about that.
Did you mean minimum?
No, I did not.
Okay, just know that I'm listening to you, Adam.
Closer than I'm listening to myself, apparently. Okay, housing commission folks, any feedback? Okay.
Do you think it's clearer?
Okay. Sure, so, so it would be the remaining area of a property after subtracting, subtracting all wetlands, flood plains, and areas with steep slopes greater than 25% within the steep slopes overlay district, that also meets the minimum district lot area requirement.
Will you text that or email it or something?
So why are we throwing the also in there? I think, because we don't need also, because that, this, meeting the minimum district area lot requirement is the only criteria.
Hmm. Well, it's two things happening at once, right? It's the subtracting plus the...
Yeah, but we're saying, we're, get rid of all that subtract, and you say the remaining area, and then you've got conditional phrases and prepositional phrases and all that stuff, and if you were to drop all that, you'd have to say the remaining area meets the minimum district lot area requirement.
Yeah, I figured.
You want me to prep, you want me to diagram the sentence for you?
Email, perfect. Yeah, email's probably easier.
I'll leave it to the, the professional editors.
I think what, what you had, as long as you get rid of also, I'm happy with the revised definition.
Any other components of the ordinance that people feel need attention before it's moved forward, or...
And are folks clear on net tract area, what we did there? Okay. Thanks, everybody, for that. Oh, yeah, and as Adam said, any other, it's not like we haven't all spent a lot of time looking at this, but...
Three of us in there, or three people in the room, a lot more than the rest of us.
Right. And then what about from the, the public? Any, any questions, comments on this, or including the change we just made to net tract area?
I have a question.
Yeah, Janet?
So we're going to have a public hearing on January 10th. Will this whole document be on the warrant?
Yes. On, so it'll be on the warrant, it will not be on the ballot. So on, in the warrant, in the town report, goes all of the language. On the ballot, it will say, you know, amendment, whatever, and then you'll have the little description that goes there, and then it will say, planning board supports or planning, I assume it'll be planning board supports amendment, and then that's all that you see on the ballot. So the text, it's up to the voters to do their homework before showing up at the, at the booth, and that's always the case with all zoning amendments, with all budgets, you know, the whole budget doesn't get, well, that gets voted on on the floor, but...
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure.
So, so there will be many people that are going to be voting on this that will have not...
Yeah.
There will, there will be many people who are voting on this will have not done their homework and understand what they're voting for.
Right.
Potentially, I mean, I'd like to think that, you know, have faith in our voters that they're doing their homework, so, you know, hopefully, even if they haven't read their town report to maybe read all of the, the text, hopefully they've seen, you know, something in municipal matters, something that the housing commission has put out, you know, something that explains some context behind it, even if they are not, you know, intimately familiar with every change that's been proposed within the ordinance. Truth be told, most voters don't, don't have any idea what's in our zoning ordinance on the whole.
So, Adam, because this is such a, a, a huge area of concern that the people want, they want workforce housing, and they want this overlay district explained, is there any way of taking some of this and, and, I don't know, and getting it out to the public in, into the newsletter or something, so that people have a chance to really look it over before they come and just vote?
Right, and so that's where I was saying, you know, we'll utilize municipal matters and, and other avenues, and I think that the housing commission will be really helpful in, in helping us, you know, sort of advertise this. I think Peter has discussed, you know, holding some, some sort of separate meetings that are outside of the official public hearing process to kind of, you know, gain some community support. People can write letters to the editor, you know, you can do all those sorts of things to try and at least just explain the context and the, the objective of it, if not each individual detail in, you know, in all of its nitty gritty glory. But that's sort of, you know, those are steps that we need to take and deal with after January 10th. You know, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves that, you know, we have to take a vote on January 10th whether to move it forward at that point at the public hearing. So, you know, I assume that, that we don't have a ton of public here tonight, we have not had a ton of public at all of our work sessions, so, but you never know.
Do, do we as a planning board need to schedule a Saturday morning informational session for the town, for people who want to come and just ask any questions?
I, I think those are bridges we can cross after January 10th.
Okay.
But maybe not Saturday mornings.
I was just gonna say, that's not a good choice.
Right? Adam said south. Do you have a question, Mary Ann?
What's that?
I was thinking of you.
Yeah, I do.
I hope they help, I hope that this isn't voted down, because people don't know the extent of what they're voting for, and then it doesn't pass.
But if it doesn't pass, then that sends us back to the drawing board to try to figure out a better way to have them digest it, you know? I mean, that's, that's a, you know, something that we need to pay attention to.
And not that, I mean, I think we're all hopeful that this does pass, but, you know, I think it is important to, to understand that big ordinance changes oftentimes do not pass on the first try, and sometimes it does take a couple of times. And so if something were to not pass, I think, you know, to Emily's point, it's not, this is, this is, didn't pass and it's never going to pass, it's, this didn't pass this time, what do we need to do in order to either explain it better or to make it more palatable going forward?
I, excuse me, David, I think what you're saying is, do we have a responsibility to ensure that people have the best understanding about this that they can to facilitate their positive vote on this, because it's such an important issue, and we've worked really, really hard at it. And I for one say that, gee whiz, let's do the best that we can. I don't know that municipal matters is the only forum, or the only vehicle that we can use, and I don't know how engaged you guys want to be on this, but I do think it at least merits a, you know, a open forum talk session, or whatever, and I know that we can discuss it after January. Does that give enough time to schedule stuff and give people, you know, alert them to come to a talk session?
Yes, I think it does.
Okay.
Because I think you have to approach something like this as close as you can to the actual event. So if you talk to them, we're certainly not going to do anything before Christmas, because nobody's going to listen. If we talk to them in January, the town meeting is March, that's an eternity in terms of, of what people are doing and thinking and so forth. So i- if we want to do this, you do it sometime at the very end of February, when there's a week or two before the actual town meeting, I don't know the date, and that's when you, that's where you churn up the, the information process.
And that's when it may be on people's minds, because they know it's coming up for the vote. That's fine, as long as we do something to facilitate their understanding and maximize the opportunity... the opportunity for this to pass. We have spent a lot of time, you, you people have spent a lot of time and a lot of energy doing this, as have we, so let's maximize that, and I'm happy to discuss it in January as long as we do something. Are you okay with that, David?
Yes.
Okay. One more question?
I'm not trying to be facetious or funny. There's a, there's a line that I always remember from the, from one of those movies, you know, this was one of the mafia movies, and, and one of the sayings was, keep your friends near and your enemies nearer. So I always thought about that, and I've thought about that in the times in my life when I've been involved in politics. You always have to think about, who's oxes getting gored in this, if anybody? Who's prob, who's, who are we creating problems for? And that's the question we need to be able to answer in any kind of a forum that we might have. You know, personally, I think this is fine, but I'm me, and I'm not representing anybody except me, so, yeah, we need to, we need to, we need to get into the head of, we have to ask the question, really, of who's oxes being gored in this, if anybody? It may not be anybody. That's the way politics works.
Do we discuss that in a public forum, Paul, or do we?
You're being recorded.
I think, I mean, I hear what people are saying. Our first hearing on this will be January 10th if we decide to move this ahead, so I hear your point, Paul, that it is far out, but at the same time, that is one opportunity for the public to become engaged, and I agree with you, David, that, you know, we would like people to be as well informed on this as, as we can be because of the extraordinary work of the Housing Commission, as well as what this board has done, but there, you know, we can, I think, talk about those things. There are obviously limits to how much we can get folks to pay attention, but I think we'll do our best. Are there, yeah, go ahead, David.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to vote on this?
Yep, we need to, we need a motion, and I'm sorry, you guys don't have batteries in your, it'll just keep turning off.
So move.
To move it forward to January 10th? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstention?
He got it back.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So then the only, well, we have one other quick, Janet's like, wrap it up. So we just need to talk about the, the one that we didn't move on in terms of the, the buffer, the lot size buffer. Go back to.
Article five?
Five, is that, I can't remember.
So is the consensus to not move forward with the setbacks this year?
We heard Janet's fair, you know, point about that. What, what do folks think? We just need to decide if we are comfortable leaving this one behind or if we want to try to move it ahead.
I'm okay either way.
What did you say?
I'm okay either way. I think, you know, I, I get that, you know, it's cleaning the ordinance up.
Yeah.
But if we don't feel that it's, it's one too many, it's a hill too far, perhaps we should.
The one saving grace, I think, is because we have the summary that people are going to see and not all the text.
Right, yeah.
They're going to just see the bulleted thing, but I hear your point. I don't know what others think.
Yeah.
I think it's too much.
You think it's too much?
I could be persuaded otherwise, but I really think it's too much.
Okay.
I mean, the reality is, whether it's changed or whether it stays the same, the needle doesn't move a substantial amount.
Okay.
It makes my life easier when I come to issuing building permits, but it's not like it's terribly difficult right now.
Thanks to the Housing Commission. Thank you for coming. Appreciate, and thanks for staying so long. I know it was a long night.
Enjoy sleeping in on Thursday morning.
Yeah, enjoy your time on Thursday morning. So is, is the thought that we leave it? Just trying to get a consensus here. Okay, it seems like I'm seeing heads nod.
You know, it's, it's, it's politics again. You know, what, you know, you want to get, you want, half a loaf is better than none.
Yep.
And so, so, you know, what we're thinking about is, is that particular section so vital to this that it's going to not have, be, make the whole thing inadequate? Well, I don't think that's true.
Yep.
And, 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 you know, we're all, I don't know if we're all going to be here, but hopefully all of us will be here in another year, and we can talk about it then.
Yep, that's fair.
Fair enough. Okay, so, okay, I hear that. So nothing to vote on there. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay.
So our next meeting is January 10th, which will be the public hearing for all of these amendments. As it currently stands, we have the continuation of Twin Pines that night, and I believe that's our only applicant on the docket, and today was the deadline, and I'm not aware of anything that came in, so.
Could I ask a question? I just, I'm curious because I just don't know. So where are things at down at the hospital?
As far as continuum goes?
Yes.
So they're in the, in the point of the project where they are tying up all of their financing odds and ends, so they have particular thresholds they have to meet as far as pre-sales and that sort of thing go for their financer to commit to the project, and so they're working on that. They're working on obtaining like their bonds that they have to have for town infrastructure implications. We, our department heads are working on identifying how much that bond needs to be, you know, so to what level are they impacting public infrastructure and how much do we need to hold for that? They've given us the estimates for what that work's going to cost them, and then we have to figure out, you know, do we take it at 100% of that? Do we take it at 150% of that? Because we know that costs just keep going up these days, and so we're sort of in that process. So I think they're still moving towards a spring groundbreaking.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's April of '23 they were planning for.
Yeah.
And that may not mean, you know, foundations port April of '23, but, you know, site work will start, you know, it could mean that foundations are important until next fall.
And, and then the development behind the market.
So I think I shared, did I share with you all that memo that they sent? I think I did a couple of weeks ago, but I can resend it, too, that they're working on assessing changes to the overall site layout for Twin Pines right now, trying to reduce their site costs and to try to identify the manner in which they can build the 60 units most efficiently, but also that fits into the community. So I would expect we will get an update from them soon.
Okay, well, nothing else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.